In case your meeting is hacked, what needs to be done? So rather than taking a session on a presentation, I will take it as a practical demonstration so that you can learn more about it. So can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so this is how your laptop looks like. First, how to download Zoom? So this we are talking about on a laptop of Zoom of Windows. So you just write there Zoom, Google it, you don't have to write the full web address. Google will tell you the address. Just to download, you have to click Download here or you can go to the website but you can click Download here. It will take you directly to the direct link of download. It says Zoom Meeting, Zoom Client for Meetings, version 5.5, this download is the latest version. And if you see at the bottom, the installer will download. When you click this Show All, it will show up an installer EXE file which is an executive file. So if you click that, it will pop up the initialization. So it will take couple of minutes to download, the Zoom is already downloaded, so we will skip this part of it. Or it will get updated after this. And you just have to follow the instructions, it is pretty clear when you install it. So since it is already installed, this is what you see the window. Then you need to create an account. So before we go into this, you need to first create an account so you can go back to the Zoom website. Over here and it's over here it says join a meeting. So in case you have an ID, somebody has invited you for a session, you have an ID, you can directly join from here, you don't need to download a software, you can also download from a web browser. But it is always advisable to download a software to make it more stable. You can host a meeting from a web browser also over here. But before you do that, you have to have an account over here which is like sign up, it's free. So. This is the link and if you see this one, copy invitation. So this is where you can copy the entire invitation and the invitation will look like this. So it will have a meeting ID or the passcode, it will have every all kind of details over here. So we will end this part. Now the security feature over here is if let's say the muting people are making noise, so that you can mute all. So it says mute all current and new participants, allow the participants to unmute themselves. If you remove this, this will become a forced mute. Now a participant cannot unmute yourself, I am trying to unmute myself on the phone, I cannot unmute myself. Otherwise what you can do is if you want to mute as one-time activity and but you will let people to unmute themselves, now you have to click this and say yes. Now people are muted. So people are muted but they can unmute themselves as per their choice. If you go here, now if I want people to, if I want some kind of, there are people of five, six meetings and I want to say and ask everyone to unmute. So I can say ask all to unmute. I will get an alert saying on my screen, the host wants to unmute you. Now this is where lot of people when they join the meeting, they make noise because they don't know whether the meeting they are joining is they are muted or not. So you can choose this feature over here. And this feature says whoever is a new participant, they will be automatically muted and it doesn't matter what their choice is. Then allow participant to unmute themselves which I have already covered. If this is tagged, then they can unmute themselves otherwise this is a forced mute. Now if you do this, no matter what happened, the non-host cannot unmute themselves. Allow participants to rename themselves, lot of people join by Galaxy O5 or something like that. So they can, once they join the meeting, they can change their name. This is again where you want to, where it happens in a small meeting and you want to know when people are joining and when people are not joining, so it just makes a noise. Enable room, this is again a security feature which we will cover. Either you have to do an enable waiting room or you have to enter a passcode. If you do not want a waiting room and if you want people to join automatically, then as a security feature, you need to have a password. So if you give a meeting ID and a password, that is more than enough, you do not need a meeting room. Now again, security feature locker meeting where you, let's say, let's say five people are joined the meeting and you do not want somebody to hack the meeting or somebody to join as an illegal representative of somebody, so you can lock a meeting. Now nobody can join this meeting even if they have a user ID and password. Now coming to the security features. So if you see, this is again whatever features I told you, security features are over here as one column. It says locker meeting, so this now the meeting is open. If I lock the meeting, the meeting is locked, nobody can enter the meeting. Enable the waiting room, I have already discussed it, right now I can disable it because I have a password for it. So now there is no waiting room, so if I put this person, so if I leave this room right now and if I join this meeting again, if I join this meeting again, so see, I will automatically enter the meeting and I will not enter a waiting room here because I have disabled the waiting room. Three zero four zero seven nine. Okay, so I cannot join because the meeting is locked. So I have to unlock the meeting and now I have to ask the participant to join the meeting again because the meeting was locked, I did not see. And he said that okay, the meeting is locked even if the security feature is removed for the waiting room. I cannot join the meeting, so I have to re-enter the password, I have to re-enter the meeting. And this is three zero four zero seven nine. So I will not go into the waiting room, I will directly come. So I have the password, I have everything. I do not go into the meeting, I will automatically come. So this is the feature where it says locked room, we have understood locked room, we have understood the waiting room. Now hide profile pictures, so a lot of people do branding, they can put their name, they can put any vulgar picture. So you can say hide profile pictures, this will hide all the pictures which is there. Allow participant to share the screen, so in case you want a participant to share a screen but you do not want to give them a co-host. So you can say over here, allow participant to share the screen. Allow participants to chat. Again they can chat, allow participant to rename, we have already covered, start video. Now remove a participant, this is the difference between this feature and the other feature over here where it says, so I don't want to remove right now. So let's say I remove here. So I don't want to remove right now and cancel. So the difference between this feature over here, remove participant and this feature is I can go individually and remove one by one. Okay? And this one, so let's say I have a list of ten people and ten people, I am not able to control a meeting, so I will go to a security, I will say remove participant. Since I have only one participant, it says remove, if I have ten participants, it will also remove in front of them. All I do is I go and click. I say if I want to report, if he is vulgar and if I want to report to Zoom, Zoom has a recording, they will check. Otherwise you can say do not report, just remove from the chat. And if I say this, this person will go out of the meeting. Now this is a very important feature which says suspend all participant activity. This is in the case where the meeting is hacked. Somebody has taken control of your meeting and you do not know what to do. So this feature has an inbuilt feature of lock meeting, hide profile pictures, stop the video and remove the participant. So we will see how it works right now. You need to see at your screen, so it says suspend all the activities you do there and you say suspend. The participant's activities has been suspended. So I can see over here, so this meeting now is locked. So if you go see, the meeting is locked. Let's do it again. Let's do it again, I will show you. So meeting right now, I have removed the unlock over here, I have removed the hide waiting thing. Hide profile pictures and say, so now I go over here, I say suspend activity, I say suspend. So see, it says suspend. The waiting room is enabled, profile pictures is enabled, the video camera is disabled, everything is automatically done. And the moment you do that, you can also choose who was making a mess and you can remove it and you can restart the meeting and what you have to do is you have to go and cancel. You have to say unlock the meeting and ask people to start speaking. So this is a very important feature which has been introduced recently from the Zoom to take care of the security fault. Now a major concern which happens is when you share a screen, a lot of people try to hack the meeting. So what are we gonna do in that? So let's say this is my shared screen. Now somebody will come, I am presenting over here and somebody will come and say, you know what, I will let me destroy the meeting. So what I will do is, I will, this is the option they will get. So I will say okay. Okay, so this is what I will do, start doing. Have you seen this kind of a thing which happens every time? Now I cannot do anything in this meeting. So what you have to do is whoever is the host will have an option first to make sure that the speaker continues speaking and you have to, you know, remove the participant. But you cannot do everything at one go. So first what you have to do is you have to go here, clear all drawings. So at least this thing has been removed. So this person again will start doing like this. He is destroying your meeting, he is hacking your meeting. Again you go clear over here, then go over here, security feature, remove a participant and if this guy is doing, just remove him. Now sometimes you do not understand who is doing this. So what you do is, again this person is doing, go to security. So lot of times, there is a feature which I will show you where you can say who is doing this. So whenever I am doing this, the host will come to know over here that okay, Agarwal is doing this or somebody else is doing this. So you can take care of that part. Otherwise what you do is, you say suspend the meeting. Lock the meeting, the screen goes off. You take care, you make the room stable and then ask the participant to share the screen again. Now the meeting is locked. Now the meeting is locked, only the participants can see your screen, they cannot do anything. So they cannot open the video, they cannot do, they cannot do, you know, that coloring over there, they cannot do anything. If all features have been disabled, now you give a presentation, when the presentation is given, you stop the screen. You open the lock room. You open the lock room and that's it. That is all you have to do. Now lot of times you do not want this feature, you do not want because for let's say we don't use this feature. So what you do now is, so by the way, everything is cleared over here, so we will go on the back office now, backstage now. So this is what was happening in the front stage. Any questions over here, I will take it otherwise.
Abhi isko karte hue bhi to aap isko hata sakte hain na bina background lagaye. Nein, aur to maine bata diya. Nein, bataana na, hatana kaise hai usko? Hataana kya yeh bataaya na dobara bataa hu. Apne se main bataaya, clear karo. Annot karne bataaya. No, 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 not feature hatane ke liye na. Annot feature directly to kasa chahena, bina background lagaye. Nein, wo piches hatega, not feature. What you have to do is, let's say aap is screen share karo. So yahan pe annot hai. To yahan pe aapke baad shroob yeh hai, aap isko yahan se hatana nahi sakte. Hataane ke liye aapko pichhe background pe jaake, so acha yeh hai, okay fine. So you can disable. So over here, once you are sharing the screen, ye saare aapke features upar a gaya. So you go here. You can go here and say over here. So okay, so this says disable and not for others. So now in this screen, I can say disable. Now I will clear here, now the person who was making this mess cannot see the option which are on the top over here. So this is, I am the host, so I can see it if you are a non-co-host. Then you will not, so if I say enable, it will be enabled. This is for a particular meeting. This is for a particular meeting. Now if I go here and say hide names of the person. So this is what I was saying, show names of an orders. So this means that you want to know who is making a mess. If this is there, you will come to know who is making a mess, who is not making a mess. So this is a feature where let's say if I am making a mess, I can actually show you that also if you want. So let me join the meeting. From the other ID. Okay, so right now I am as a host, I am not touching my mouse. So if you see, you will see my name here, Agarwal, you see that name here? Do you see that name? So this is the person who is making a mess. And if you, if I go here and say disable a note, so now I cannot do it. I cannot do it on my phone. And if I say hide names, now if I make any mess over here. So if I now make a mess, you will see, now you cannot see my name here. Now you cannot see my name here. So clear all drawings, if you see again. See, you cannot see my name here and if you go here again and say show names and so now you will see my name here, Agarwal. So you exactly know who is making a mess here. So this is an option where you can make a temporary disable. If you want to make a permanent disable, you have to go on the back office side. Back office, because. We can cover that later because that's more detailed. So if you want me to cover anything else, I can do that. So thank you, Sarab. Isko hata diji screen ko. So thank you for elaborating. Seventy-five percent aapke sar ke upar se nikal gaya hoga. Isliye aapko bar-bar isko dekhna hoga. Because this was too technical. And twenty-five percent hai sar ke upar se bhi nikla. Because jo aadbi shikhaata hai, vo thora technical ho jata hai bich me. Uske saath me, to usko bar-bar dekhiye. And we will make at least twenty videos out of it, ek-ek karke. Aur ek-ek video ko aap dekhenge, tabhi jaake aap isko samajh payenge. That's all for today. Let me thank everybody for this particular meeting, kaise meeting ko off kar diya jaye.